It's 5:30. I'll call the meeting to order. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight to our commission meeting. First item on our agenda would be appointments. We have the Park Board, one resignation. Applications were due February 15th. We had one applicant for the position, Marty Long. With that, I would like to recommend that Marty Long be appointed to the vacancy on the Park Board. So with that, I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second. Actually, she says she doesn't live in the city. That's...
Right. She lives on Wingard Road, and I believe for the Park Board, there is allowed...
Great. Okay. I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Adoption of the agenda. I guess we should have that.
Do we have an amended agenda because we have the extra item tonight?
We sent them the updated...
Oh, did you? Okay.
With the extra item.
Okay.
Yeah, I updated mine with a pen.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any more additions to the agenda beside the one item? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented then with the additional item.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item is adoption of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on our agenda is presentations. Presentation by Montgomery County Collaboration Partnership Representatives. Who is going to speak?
I would like to introduce City Administrator Fred Gress, City Manager Mr. Kendall, and Brooke Carroll from the City of Cherryvale City Administrator, and they're going to be here to present.
Welcome.
Good morning, good afternoon, whatever it is. It feels like an afternoon.
Glad to see you all here.
As Kelly said, my name's Kendall Francis. I'm Coffeyville City Manager, and I'm here on behalf of the Montgomery County Collaboration Partnership, which is just a fancy title that we gave ourselves. We're a collective of the governing bodies of the different municipalities and the county here in Montgomery County. For the past, oh, 14, 15 months, we've been meeting pretty much monthly in an attempt to find ways that we can better work together, look for efficiencies, try to develop cost savings for the different governing bodies and for our citizens here in Montgomery County. And we thought that it was time that we come before each of you and kind of let you know what we've been doing for the past year or so. And this is stop number three, I think, on the tour. We've been to the City of Kaney, and the group came and presented to Coffeyville. And we'll be, on Monday, I think we'll be finishing it up with the County Commission and the City of Cherryvale. So Kelly has presented a PowerPoint, kind of helped us go through some of the things we've been doing. And when I say that this was a group of representatives from the different governing bodies, a lot of them are here tonight, not only Fred and Brooke. Kelly attends, Craig Whitehead attends regularly, and as I see in the back, Jerry Harrison, Mike, he's trying to hide back there, Dave. You have quite a representation from the City of Independence, and obviously, we get a county commissioner when they're available to come to our meetings. And let's just kind of review some of the things we've been looking at. Again, this is just an opening statement, but accomplishments. The first one that's listed is not actually the first one that I want to talk about because we didn't really put it on the slide. And to me personally, what I think is maybe our best accomplishment, our greatest accomplishment, is communication. We have significantly improved communications across all entities that are involved in this. I've been in Coffeyville since August of 15, and, you know, one of the first things I learned was of the great divides that are existing in Montgomery County between all governing bodies. And it's been eye-opening this past year on how much that has improved, 1,000 percent. We, on a, maybe not daily, but a weekly basis, we're having communications among all of us involved on a variety of topics. And it's not just stuff that we are talking about in our monthly meetings, but it's, we've built an open communication, and we're, we feel comfortable being able to reach out to one another to ask for help, to ask advice. We may be entities of different sizes, but the problems are typically the same, just on different scales. And so we've been able to not only share what we know, but to help each other brainstorm on solutions. And I don't, I can honestly say I don't think that comfort was there when I first came in 2015. And I think, I think I echo what everybody feels in that regard, that the communication has, in my opinion, has been our greatest accomplishment. Not that, not that we haven't done some good things, but just being, just having that freedom to express views and talk to each other and be able to ask for help and be confident that they're, they want to help and are going to answer when you call, so. But something that's a little bit more tangible, we talked about pooled training. And we, unfortunately, down here in southeast Kansas, we sometimes get ignored when trainings are being offered throughout the state. And a lot of times, they're centered around Topeka, Salina, the more metropolitan areas, Kansas City. And, you know, so it's expensive to have to travel to those. And so we started looking at ways that we could start bringing some of those trainings down here to southeast Kansas. And a few that you'll see listed there, ethics training. Brooke hosted an ethics training over in Cherryvale. They also hosted a workshop from USDA Rural Development, which talked about project financing, a lot of great information, and I think some stuff that Fred took away from there and, you know, and be able to help his community. We brought in, there was an active shooter training, excuse me. It was a discussion that was based on the events in Heston, the manufacturer in there. And we also have some NIMS and Public Information Officer training that the City of Independence hosted. You know, we're looking at a lot of other things that we, we have good facilities here. Memorial Hall is typically where we host our monthly meetings. We come here. Now that we've managed to finally renovate City Hall, you know, in Coffeyville, we have some other, some other meeting spaces available. But we think that we have a lot to offer and are attractive to bring people down to this part of the country so that we can host some regional trainings. The next accomplishment, I'm going to turn over to Brooke. This is a little bit more of her forte and what she's been dealing with a little bit more directly.
Okay. Thanks, Kendall. Just to elaborate on what Kendall said regarding the communication amongst all of us, it really is exceptional. I still consider myself a new city manager, even though I've been here a year, and I'm still going to hide behind that every chance I get. But, you know, I think Kendall should probably be on the Cherryvale payroll because I call him so much. What about this? What about that? And same with Fred. I mean, him and I, you know, we've developed such a great relationship amongst us. We know who to call. I think I've called Mike. Hey, Mike, you got any ideas on this? You know, so we work together to come up with solutions to this. And the networking, I mean, we're so close that, you know, we need to be that way. One of the issues that we found important in our groups, and we reevaluate the important topics that we need to talk about in the group and focus on, but housing became a subcommittee. And housing is an issue in all four cities. We all have different needs. Independence has a need. Cherryvale needs to demolish. You know, we need to clean up. We would like to build, but, you know, we need to clean up. Independence needs to build. I think Fred needs to demolish, right? So we all have different needs. And so housing is such a crazy, crazy hat to take on, hat. I guess I should say that. Housing assessment tool. Because the financing that we're seeking requires us to do so much work to get that financing. And so what we have created is the Housing Subcommittee where it kind of keeps each city accountable towards a goal, okay? So we know that Cherryvale needs to do a hat, Kaney needs to do a hat. We all need to do these little pieces. And hopefully, when we meet, we'll eventually come with a big, a big project where we can take to the federal government or the state government to get a big grant to take care of all the needs that we need to do. A lot of the financing that we have found in April, April Net is also part of this group. I mean, she's a powerhouse, actually, behind this. But she, you know, this can, a lot of the funding ends up going to bigger cities like Kansas City, Wichita, and, you know, our little projects in Cherryvale don't bring a lot of attraction for funding when they're trying to divvy up money. So if we can come together with a grant proposal, hopefully, we'll attract some attention at state level. So that's, that's our hope. And with the potential of some great economic development in our area, hence, hopefully, we can be ahead of the game before it gets here and get our housing stock, housing goals in place before that happens. So that's kind of our goal with that, so.
And I might, I might just add just a little bit to that. Some of those things, she referred to the hat, the housing assessment tool, are things that we can share among each other, the forms that we've developed to inspect houses and things like that. We're sharing those among each other. We're not reinventing the wheel for each, for each community. So again, more ways that we're, we're working together to make things easier for everyone.
One more thing on that as well. I like that it keeps us accountable as a group. We get all these projects in our minds and all the things we want to do. And Fred and I have limited resources. A lot of times, you and me, right? Let's do this, Fred.
If they got any extra money, we'll get it.
Right. So, you know, we have to take care of day-to-day stuff, and we don't have time to deal with the big projects. So if we know we are part of a big project, it keeps us accountable. We've got a meeting to go to. We've got a subcommittee to go to. We have to get our hat done. We have to do this. So this subcommittee helps us keep ourself accountable to the progress of the goal, so.
The next, the next thing that we wanted to highlight, we've entitled Group Purchases and Combination of Services. We've heard a couple of presentations, at least one from Green Bush, about their bulk purchasing program. And immediately, the City of Independence took advantage of that and was able to purchase a copier through, after hearing the presentation and the savings that were provided through their, I think it's state purchasing power. And some of the other things that have come out of this, City of Cherryvale says that they bought a generator from the county. And that, that's really about that communication, that getting together. Cherryvale had a need, and the county had something in excess, and...
And it was just as simple as, we applied for a FEMA grant, were denied for the funding for a generator, and I come to the meeting complaining about it. And when we got denied, well, somebody says, well, we got one sitting on a shelf. Well, hey, why don't we talk about that? So, I mean, it's just the communications. Save us money, build and eat, so.
Those are the things that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't have started meeting together. Listed some equipment the City of Kaney had purchased. And this was through a company, reading company, who had brought a presentation down to City of Cherryvale about, they're a company that refurbishes equipment and then resells it. City of Kaney was able to take advantage of some of that and be able to meet some of the needs that they have equipment-wise. The next few slides are just a kind of a recap. We do take notes occasionally. And so Kelly was good to go through some of the meetings we were having and pull out some of the highlights of the things that we had, we have looked at. And, you know, I won't read for you and bore you with that, but just as we start looking through here, we just see about the county's waste tire grant, asphalt bid. That's something that, that comes, that I want to call attention to as we're talking about bulk purchasing, group purchasing. That's one area that we have a true need in this, in this area for is asphalt. As a, as a individual city, we typically don't buy enough in bulk to prompt the company to produce asphalt in a timely fashion. But as we're working with Montgomery County, you know, and Robert Beaver says, well, you know, we buy it in pretty large quantities. And so if we start talking with them and letting them know what our needs are going to be, not only are we able to piggyback onto their purchasing power and large, large bulk quantities of asphalt, we're going to get it much cheaper, but it's also going to be more readily available as a, as a, more apt to produce for larger quantities. So that's, that's been a big, a big improvement. In fact, we were, I think I just received an email the other day from, from Robert to say, we're getting ready to, getting ready to do our bids, you know, what kind of projects do you guys anticipate and what kind of needs do you have? So again, that's, that's an area that's been a win for this group, definitely. Fred?
I just, I said at Coffeyville the other night that, actually, when you step back and look at all this, it's just amazing how much, how much we really were doing, and we probably didn't recognize it, and how much potential there is just to keep going and growing. The asphalt is going to be huge to the City of Kaney because typically, we would go out and bid it ourselves, and we're a pretty small entity, but getting great quality, great prices for such a small quantity. But now that the county's, we're stepping in with the county, and I expect we're going to save quite a lot of money. We won't save it because we'll just be able to do that in any more streets, so. It's a good thing. It's going to be a good thing, and we just need to keep growing and working.
One thing on these slides that catch my attention, I'd just seen the word building inspector. We have, we have talked in the group about being able to maybe somehow share personnel or ways that we could utilize personnel, you know, collectively. I know I have, what's listed up there is building inspector for Cherryvale and Kaney. I've had discussions with, with Independence about housing inspections, not only with, with Kelly, but with April, as we were instituting some rental inspections, and we were, we were without someone qualified to do that. So, you know, those are the kind of things that we're talking about internally. They don't get publicized a lot, but I think it's important for not only you, but the citizens to know that we, we're really trying to think outside the box, you know, and ways to cost share and realize some true savings. And personnel is something that everyone struggles with. Personnel is a large cost, but you might be able collectively, if we can, if we can think about it in, in ways that we can truly share personnel, so. I'm going to turn it back over to Brooke, and she's kind of wrapped things up for you.
Some of the ideas that, we keep throwing out new ideas, and we're always willing to accept new ideas, so if any time down the road that you want us to research a topic or if you want to attend a meeting, you know, you're always welcome. We're always open to new ideas, new ways to solve different problems. But some of the things that we, that are, that may be coming down the future is Wellness Coalition. There's Marcy Wells?
Roberts.
Roberts. Marcy Roberts from Coffeyville. She, she's got a grant with wellness stipulations, and she's wanting to get that going. An S E K drug task force, more work towards ADA compliance, minimum housing standards, neighborhood revitalization projects, anytime there's grant opportunities and training opportunities. So, you know, we just keep this going. I almost feel like this is kind of like a close to our season because, I mean, we did this, and now it's going to be like, okay, we're going to come back on Monday, I believe, and be like, now what? Now what are we ready to start with? So again, we're always open to ideas, even from citizens. If you have ideas that you'd like us to research and go forward and see what we can do, we're always open to that. So Fred, you have anything?
You can stand here and think about things. We're getting ready to renew our health insurance, and that's...
I don't want to talk about health insurance. That's not good.
I said that just for you, so.
Thank you.
But if we can make a bigger group, it might get better, so.
Let's talk about that. Okay.
But there's, and that's a difficult subject to talk about and finally put in place, but the potential dollar savings makes it worth reaching out there and trying to do it, so.
Any questions from you guys?
Do you have regular meetings, like a regular once a month?
We usually meet once a month. It's usually...
About the third Monday typically is...
Third, fourth Monday?
We vary a little bit.
Uh-huh. And we could attend one?
Mm-hmm.
So how do we find out about them?
It's at noon, and that's right.
We'll send you a message. We'll get your name, put you on the email list, and then you'll always know. How about that?
This is fabulous.
I think, right?
I would caution you that two of you is a quorum, and so we need to be mindful of that.
Sure.
And...
Only if we talk, right?
Well...
We never talk. Right?
Who are you?
Ask your attorney.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Fair enough.
I think this is a great idea. I think it was at the 2015 Governing Body Institute, you had a roundtable discussion, Kendall, for how you worked with the county where you came from to establish this. And it really struck me as ideal because, you know, all of us are facing similar situations in our communities, and the biggest thing we're facing is reduced dollars. So how can we share and get the most out of our dollar that it gives the opportunity by coming together that we look at a region and forget the boundaries between Independence, Coffeyville, or Cherryvale, or Kaney, that we look as southeast Kansas and, you know, Montgomery County, but we got the potential to spread farther, that we really strengthen our area, the bulk purchasing and, you know, the sharing of personnel that is really a great idea, that maybe we can't afford a department, but together, we can afford the services of a, of an engineer or, you know, even some of the things we've got now, the GIS supporting one, one station to do all the county, you know, dispatch and other, other areas that if we just put our heads together, how can we really come in as not a county or four communities, but come as one body that Kaney has a need, and we're all together, we're all talking the same language, we're all looking the same direction. And, you know, I think for, for what we're seeing in that short period of time, you're going definitely in the right direction. And I'm with Gary. I think if we could all take turns attending some of the meetings, that we can come back and, and share our ideas. We've got different backgrounds, but main thing is give each of you support and each of your community support from Independence Commission and share our support with the county, that we can take this on at a quicker pace and, and all of us benefit together, that, you know, we're all one, you know, we always get the acronyms, which is bad, the ones you selected. There's no valves, so we can't come up with a name. You know, you get those side words that we combine, and we can become one, one group, one name. But thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah. Thanks very much, and thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here.
Yep.
It's very commendable, what you're doing, breaking down barriers and boundaries. And we operate as, as one unit. We help each other out, you know, wherever we can, whether it's personnel, dollars, whatever. You know, bottom line, you know, we save the taxpayers money. That dollar comes out of the same pocket, whether it's for Cherryvale or Independence or Coffeyville, Kaney. It's all coming from the same people, so. And there's nothing wrong with finding ways to reduce costs, save money, and then use those savings toward other important needs, infrastructure needs that the community would need. So, yeah, I'd like to be a part of this, so I'll be looking forward to an invitation also.
Well, I guess we, we'd open the invitation Monday.
It's Monday at noon.
We'll be here at noon. It'll be our next one. And I think our agenda literally is, what next? I mean, that's the one thing, you know, we've kept to this point, as Brooke said, but we're, we need to look strategically ahead at what are some of these things that maybe we could delve into more deeply. And, and we're hoping, you know, we'll start hearing some from the governing bodies, maybe a little bit, as to some ideas that they have or, or that they would like to, like to see explored in, in greater depth.
What's your guys' schedule for Monday?
I'll be in Kansas City.
I'll, I'll go first, unless you have, unless you'd rather go Monday.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Look for me Monday, noon, in this room.
And we'll be right here.
Right here.
Fantastic.
We'll even feed you.
Okay.
Wow.
Do I need to bring anything other than a pencil and paper?
Yeah. I'll change my schedule.
Okay.
For free food.
Well, I wasn't going to feed you, but I would feed you.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Great stuff.
Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by LaBette Health President and CEO Brian Williams regarding the Economic Development Grant requirements and a status update on the Independence Healthcare Center. Welcome, Brian.
So, thank you. I also, Mayor also brought Becky Mitchell, the Director of Independence Healthcare Center. So any technical questions, I'll defer to her.
So, I'll only pass this down.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I apologize, I didn't make enough copies.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, that's nice. Yeah, thanks. Lot of gray here. Who's got the clicker?
The clicker? It's over here.
It's right there.
There's nothing there? Okay, good. All right. Then I don't need the clicker.
That's it.
But I don't want to look at that. Can you go to the next slide? Seriously.
Too bad.
Okay. Well, anyway, in your packets, I know there was some information on the economic development, but if you would, if we could go through in order of my packet, or I'll get misoriented here. So what I tried to do with this front sheet is just tell you that 2017 was a tremendous year for Independence and LaBette Health, and we appreciate the opportunity to be a big part of it, I hope. Based on the emails and the cards I received around Christmas, I think we've been very blessed and fortunate to be a part of this wonderful community. Besides Independence Healthcare Center opening July 4th, 2017, we also received recognition as a hospital in the top 3% of the United States hospitals. as a hospital in the top 3% of the United States hospitals for orthopedic care with our U.S. News and World Report Best Hospitals. That's an annual report. It's pretty tough. The cut is pretty tough to make it, so that's a tremendous asset for Southeast Kansas. We continue to be recognized by Care Checks as a hospital in the top 10% of the nation based on our quality outcomes data, which includes surgical site infections, mortality, surgical complication rates. And so, that's an important accomplishment for Southeast Kansas. And this is really, you know, a big one. We've been working hard at this for a number of years. We earned a five-star hospital rating from the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services. There's only 334 hospitals in the United States that earn that distinction. And, you know, I think we're fortunate in Southeast Kansas. We have a four-star Wilson Medical earned four and Labette Health earned five, and I think mostly other hospitals in the area are three. And then one east of here and south was two for a while. I'm not sure where they are now. And it's based on 64 publicly reported quality measures. And, you know, sometimes people get upset with the test, but it's the best thing that we've got out there right now to measure and for people to compare hospitals. So, that's available on Hospital Compare, should anybody want to look at that. We opened the Rural Health Clinic in August. We opened the Cancer Infusion Center in September. We opened a clinic in Erie. We'd had a clinic there and some years ago we closed it, so we reopened that. And then we opened a clinic in Altamont, Kansas. So, you know, while we were working very hard, very diligently here for the citizens of Independence and Montgomery County, we were also trying to work in Neosho County and then also Labette County. The numbers there below are just our inpatient admissions, our outpatient observation admissions. But what I'm most proud of is if you look down at the bottom, the bottom numbers you'll see on the right, budget, that was a budget for seven months. We thought we were going to open in June. We opened in July. But the actual numbers compare six months of operations. So, we had estimated 1,300 ER visits. We had 3,000. We'd estimated 5,800 clinic visits. We had 7,800. So, we're doing extremely well. And again, I can't thank you enough for your leadership and your vision to help us with the road, the economic development money. You know, a big question was, is, you know, an ER sustainable? And there was a lot of information being thrown around out there. And so, year-to-date, we've generated $680,000 of contribution margin, positive, profitable, just that center. That doesn't count any patients that have surgeries at Labette Health or any patients that are transferred. So, you know, as long as we continue to, you know, be blessed by patients saying we're doing a good job, I think we have a bright, you know, a bright future here together, working together. Any questions on that? Okay. The next thing is, one of the things that we're required to do as a hospital, because we have a hospital license, is we should let local emergency medical services EMS know what the hospital capabilities are. An off-campus ER is a new phenomenon for many parts of the nation. It's a new phenomenon for Southeast Kansas. What we've done together is build really the first off-campus emergency room in a rural community, and a lot of people are wanting to come and continue to look at it. I was interviewed last week by M D News. They want to do a 10-year highlight on, you know, growth and accomplishments in Southeast Kansas. You know, we focus a lot of times on what we can't do or what we don't have, and so I was really, really pleased with the interview. The only other place in Kansas that there's an off-campus emergency room? An off-campus just means you're affiliated with a hospital, you're within 35 miles of the main campus, and you have the full support of the main campus. By law, we have to offer the same on-call services. So, if a patient presents here with an orthopedic emergency, then our on-call orthopedic surgeons there have to respond, our general surgeons have to respond, not physically here, but they have to be available to take care of the patient once transported to the trauma center. Kansas City has an off-campus emergency room and I think it's in Derby, Kansas, right outside of Wichita, southeast side of Wichita. So, again, I would direct you probably to the second page, most importantly, where it has those bulleted points. This ER is capable of taking care of any medical emergency excluding a multi-system trauma. You know, if a patient had, you know, got in an automobile accident and was thrown through the front windshield and potentially a head injury, something like that, really, Missouri has it by law. Kansas, I hope eventually will have that. EMS should transport directly to the closest trauma center. Our EMS's in this area are very good. They know where the trauma centers are. The closest one here to Independence, depending on where you are in Independence, would be Labette Health. It's a Level III trauma center. So, it would not be appropriate, you know, if you were thrown through the windshield of a car right out here to be transported to an off-campus ER or a Level IV trauma center, you should go to a Level III. Active labor, you know, if a patient's actively in labor, we don't have the capabilities to do a C-section. We don't have an operating room. But if it's a precipitous delivery, precipitous meaning if someone shows up and they're delivering, we're going to deliver that baby and we have the capabilities to do that. Urgent dialysis, you know, if someone were to be at Davita, I believe is what's here in town, and they were to go into some acute renal failure, something like that, that's beyond the capabilities of an off-campus emergency room. You've got to really get them somewhere where they have inpatient dialysis. In that instance, the closest inpatient dialysis would be Jane Phillips. We're working on that. So, other than that, cardiac, stroke, any other time-critical diagnosis, the vast majority of the time, that's the appropriate ER to go to. So, we've worked really well with the city. Dave Callen, your safety director's been given this and we've worked together to do that since July. And I think, like anything new, there's always bugs to work out, but I think things are going well. The next thing is the economic development. You know, my personal goal is to get it to 80%. The requirement was 50%, you know, for the next three years. And like we worked together, we wanted to be held accountable. Becky told me that this needs to be updated. One of the folks has now moved here. It's generally a question, and she can attest to this, I've told our managers, if you have two equal candidates, one lives in Montgomery County and one doesn't, then the one that lives in Montgomery County gets geographical preference for that. Because that's, I mean, this is your community and we want to be a part of it and help with economic development. So, we're at 77.8%. So, I think that's pretty good and you're welcome at any time if you want to go out there and talk to people, do an informal audit and check it. But we're really pleased with the success that we've had in Independence. Becky's really the face, you know, I told you, and I know Gary's really pleased that you've seen less of me. Don't think that that means I'm not, you know, I'm not thinking about Independence, but it's important. This is her home. It's where she's from and she's committed to making sure Labette Health's successful. And Gary's smiling. I know he likes her better than me, so it's easy.
Brian, that's, yeah. That's just about anybody, dude.
Yeah. So, any questions for me? And I don't know if you have any. No, she's just working hard. She gets called in at 2:00 in the morning. So, it's the interesting thing, starting off-campus ER and you're the director. I didn't tell her that, oh, by the way, you're salaried, so when you get called in at 2:00 in the morning, yeah, there's no extra pay. Thank you for your service. So... Any questions of me? I was going to pass out one last thing. Just for you guys, this is for your rappers. Craig, you know you want, but it's... You guys get this. I mean, there's a multiplier. Healthcare, because of the salaries that people, you know, probably the normal income for physicians, $240,000. You know, most of the nurse practitioners, PAs are probably making around 100. So, you have higher salaried people, which then spend more tax dollars. So, the multiplier effect is one and a half times something like, for every dollar that we have in payroll, our payroll's around $3 million now. So, it's probably, remember when we did the study, it was around 6 million, 7 million. By the time you included some other things, close to 10 million. The blow when Mercy closed was 40 million. So, again, I think probably what we need to do is, you know, sometime this summer, come together and think about, you know, most frequent question is, when are we going to start Phase II? Well, if we share resources and collaborate, maybe we can start it sooner than we thought. So, keep your fingers crossed. I think things are going well.
Yeah, it sounds like things are going very well. We had, everybody else told us it couldn't be done, so I'm glad that you've proved them wrong.
Six months doesn't make 10 years, but I appreciate that.
Yeah.
No...
Good point.
You know, I mean, it wasn't about proving people right or wrong. I mean, I remember the night you said 12 suits came in from Bartlesville in Tulsa and told you it couldn't be done and laughed when I told you the price that we could do it at. We didn't have a cost overrun. So, you know, what's done in urban cities, and I was telling somebody this the other day, and I, now that I've been here 31 months, I think it's important that we preserve this way of life. If you're in an urban city, I think people are figuring out that, eh, you don't, you know, they're deciding for us what you need, what you don't need. And that was the conversation I had that day with Kim Day. Said, so you're going back to Kansas City tonight and you're going to sleep near an ER, right? But you're going to stand up here at Memorial Hall and tell people they don't need an ER? Well, when you live here, you move here, you move your family here, then I'll believe that. Until then, I don't really believe you. So, it's a credit to your leadership. It was a tough time, but I think, you know, this is a great community and you deserve an ER and you deserve a leader like Becky.
Well, it's kind of a continuation of the previous presentation. I think we need to look at the changing environment we have, and one is with healthcare. And it's exciting that we are at the cutting edge of where healthcare is going to be and the opportunity we have now with the ER and with the emergency service where we provide. It gives us the opportunity, we're closer with you to improve the healthcare we have to our citizens in responding to calls in the community where you have the expertise there to improve that communication and work through the bugs to give a better service for our community and the surrounding area. I think that that's somewhere we need to partner close together with you as a city that we can improve right now the emergency services, that we can get the bugs worked out quickly and get efficient, that we can respond quickly to a call and look at the best healthcare for our residents. Because it is critical, and a lot of people, when Mercy left, I heard saying, we're looking elsewhere, we're moving. That security of having an emergency room, and, you know, I've got some active grandkids and for me, it was, I'm thinking of the storm that we just faced, the ice. If something happens, taking them out of town, I can make it across town, but you've really provided a relief to us. And also, you mentioned in the future where we're going to go, and I'm, I think we need to talk and you need to let us know where you're going and what it's going to take. We can't stop here at emergency room. We've got to keep looking at full service or what is the future of healthcare going to be for a community? How many beds can we sustain in-house operating suites? Is that possibility or not? But we've got to keep planning, not just stop and say, well, we got this someday. We've got to know what it's going to take for us to get that someday to happen and what we can do to commit with Labette Health, because our community's going to need that security of healthcare for businesses to come into town. And we've got to work closer together to guarantee that that's going to happen, not just tell somebody, well, someday we might, someday they might, it's someday we will. So, you know, I appreciate all that Labette Health has done and provided. My family has used your services out there more than we desire.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. But, you know, when, the last time, you know, you woke up when your wife's having a seizure, it's like, what do I do? You know, in architecture, they didn't train us to handle that. And she said that she had pain in her left arm and her jaw was hurting. Fortunately, could the police step out? Fortunately, I got a hemming. I did use it to its full capacity, but, you know, at 3:00 in the morning, there aren't a lot of people in town driving around. But, you know, it's a, what am I going to do? What am I going to do? And, you know, it's reassuring to know that we've got the facility and the staff to take care of that. Appreciate it.
You know, a couple of things, you know, you mentioned, I failed to mention. So, we are, you know, we've got limited resources like everybody else and we do need to work together. We had a profitable year last year. A lot of the hospitals in the area are laying off, not profitable. There's one with a negative $2 million net worth. So, they have 14 million in assets and 16 million in liabilities. We had our third year in a row of profitability, so we ended the year $1,012,499. I bring that up because in 2014, if you'll remember, we had a $3.6 million loss. And so, it was a tremendous turnaround and that was why people were uneasy, well, Labette Health, you guys can't do it. I wasn't sure we could either, but, you know, you can always find another job. And we're at 53% equity. That's an important thing. We were 43% equity the first time I, you know, talked to you. We're a $70 million company. Our revenues last year were 182 million. So, rural healthcare, it's an oxymoron. I don't know why it's this way. It's not fair. But our reimbursement is less and our costs are more. So, we operate on razor-thin margins. We're in the process of adding neurosurgery at Labette Health. We'll have our first neurosurgical case Monday. That's something incredible for the region, because I know the neurosurgeon personally and I'd let him take care of any of my family members, my children, and he's KU grad, so he's a Kansas boy that's going to come help us in Southeast Kansas. So, you know, I think, I think we have a bright future. We have a really good EMS. You know, we mentioned some bugs to work out. I want to be, I want to make sure I'm fair. You know, your community and your EMS almost went two years without an emergency room. So, when we flipped the light switch on and we were open, it took a little time to change because they had to find other resources. Our geographical dispersion in Southeast Kansas makes EMS a complicated job, because what is the closest, you know, facility? What are their facilities' capabilities? You know, do they have, you know, a little-known fact, by law, a critical access hospital does not have to have a provider in the hospital manning the ER. By law, they have to have an RN. The provider can be as far as 30 minutes away. There's several critical access hospitals in this area that do not have a provider in the facility when you roll up in the ER. A trauma center, by law, has to have a medical doctor, has to have an RN, has to have a general surgeon on call, has to have an orthopedic surgeon on call, has to have a radiologist. That's the point of differentiation. That's why some of the hospitals in the area aren't even any trauma center. So, resources are going to become more constrained. Healthcare costs in the foreseeable near future are not going to go down. It's one of the greatest challenges our country faces right now. Our national debt has never been higher. It's not, it's not been this high in a number of years. It's over 80%. And none of us would leverage our household incomes 80%. And I think, like I told Senator Roberts this summer and Senator Moran, I, no disrespect to them, there's no one in Congress that has the knowledge and the training to solve a 50-year, you know, problem. It's going to take a lot of cooperation from a lot of industries. So, you know, it's not unique, I guess is my point to Independence. We've got a little glimmer of sunshine. We've turned a corner. We've got an opportunity ahead of us, but we will have rough seas ahead for us. And we'll just have to either decide we're going to lay back and take what people give us, or we're going to lean forward into the wind and we'll figure out how to come together. But one of the things that, you know, as I... But, one of the things that, you know, as I listen, I think cooperation's good, collaboration. We need to begin to collaborate across county lines, these artificial governmental boundaries. I mean, everybody gets along, everybody likes each other, neighbors help each other, farmers help each other. We need to start to begin to look across. And I've talked about that with the Labette County Commissioners, I've talked about it with the Montgomery County Commissioners. And I think the cities, all the governmental entities are an important part of that. But everybody faces so many challenges in their own community, to really think about, oh, my gosh, how could we help another, another hospital? I recently reached out to Coffeyville, you know, what can we do to help, help you? Lori Rexwinkle, you know, very capable administrator, she and I talked the other night. We, we helped them last week, they've helped us. So, we, we've got to work more together in the future. That's a very true statement.
I'm glad that you, you have come, and you dream big. You know, that's what's going to continue to grow this community, along with economic development. You know, people look at your healthcare in your community, you know, when others said that that wasn't possible, you looked at what the calculated risks were, you dream big, and you've got a lot of people in this community to buy into that. That, along with economic development, is what's going to help Independence grow. You know, right, right now, we're struggling. A couple of questions, and I want to commend you for all the hard work that you have done, your staff, and for the people in the community that have stepped up and made contributions to where we have an emergency room. We have the facilities that we have here now, but we do face a lot of challenges. You know, I've looked into some areas, I know there's, there's a big drain on EMS personnel, and it's nationwide. It's not, it's not limited to one particular area of the country. But, where you're, where you're coming from, Parsons, what's, are, are there rates stable? I mean, do you see a lot of people coming in and out of your EMS department? Are they, are they staying, or are you just having them for the short term, and you're just a training ground for them to move somewhere else? You have any idea what that would look like?
Well, I've learned more about EMS in the last three years than, you know, I ever thought I'd know about EMS. So, my background, I came from a hospital that had a hospital-based EMS. So, at Cox Health, they covered 24 counties. And a lot of the municipalities, like Ozark, I remember, you know, contracted with Cox Health, and sometimes it was competitively bid with, with Mercy. Mercy had an ambulance, a hospital-based ambulance system. Then I go out to my parents, where it's predominantly fire-based, and it's, it's county-based. So, I think every, you know, every body's different. I think the history in Labette County was that it was a county EMS, it wasn't being run real well, so they approached the hospital and said, would you guys take over the county EMS? And I don't know when the quarter cent, it was supported by a quarter-cent sales tax that was specifically restricted to EMS. The hospital receives no tax support. The EMS service receives a quarter-cent sales tax. And the county commissioners have been really good to work with. The last couple of years, we've been able, through group purchasing through the hospital, supplies and things, and, and resources that we have, we've been able to run it at a profit, so to speak. So, we've not really, we've accumulated, when I first got there, we had about $1.1 million in excess funds that we've used now to replace our ambulance fleet. And the 600,000 from last year, we went back to the county commissioners and asked if we could hold on to that money to build a EMS station in, potentially in Oswego. So, we try to have two ambulances in service at all times with a backup crew on call. One of the biggest challenges that I continue to scratch my head at, and I think, and David would probably be more familiar with this, is, you know, could we come together and all work together to, to maybe start a transport service? What's painful is when you have an ambulance out of, out of, out of city or out of county, or, you know, we have to transport patients to Kansas City. You guys, I think, have to transport patients to Wichita. And so, if you've got limited staff, it's a huge drain on, you know, on resources. So, that's an area that I think would be worth us talking about. Craig was very gracious, and then David, when I got here, they were approached by an air ambulance service, you know, did we want an air ambulance? And they've kind of deferred, deferred to us. We decided to put out an RFP, and so, we've gotten proposals from three air ambulance services, and we're going to select one, and, and I think we're going to work to have an, an air ambulance at the trauma center, where we could be here in less than, less than five minutes. That, that air pad out there at that facility cost $250,000 to build, and we've used it. But, it's a lot better, you know, if I had, if I had a stroke right now, I would want to be taken there, had CT done, decided that I am in fact having a stroke, and then they'd better be calling an air ambulance to get me where I can get thrombolytics and intervention, they can start TPA. That would be the appropriate thing. So, the question you asked me, I've, I've looked at it, only because I've really looked at our EMS. I don't know the differences between a hospital-based EMS and a fire-based EMS. What I would think is, it's more challenging to be asked to be a fireman on one hand, also a paramedic, also, you know, running ambulance. I think it's easier probably for our folks to just focus on one thing, you know, so that may make our turnover a little bit lower. We, we have had, in the last three years, we've been fortunate. In 2015, 2016, we had two individuals leave, we had 11% turnover. In 2017, we had 0% turnover. Our average 10-year is nine years. So, we've got a fairly stable EMS, but that's all they do, and that's what they do. You know, so we don't expect them to do fire and, and, and things like that. So, that's, that's kind of the history for our EMS, so.
I have another follow-up question. Prior to coming into the county and looking at how the EMS department was run, what did the financial end of that look prior to, to it basically being reorganized and, and taken over by, by Labette?
Yeah, I think we have a great, you know, a lot of things, it's about leadership. You know, you, you know, I, many of you, and what I heard in the community is, it was revolving door of CEOs at, at Mercy. Kim Day admitted to me, goes, this was poorly managed. We, we could have kept this hospital open. You know, we had poor leadership. People will follow good leaders, people typically won't follow good leaders. You can take the best people, and if there's not really good quality leadership. So, I think Randy Grimmett, I thank my lucky stars every day. I mean, he's just a great, you know, leader. I think David knows him. I mean, I think they've worked well together. We stole him from Bartlesville. So, I think he's from Oklahoma, or Texas, or some, somewhere down there. So, I think that's a lot of it. Our captains are really good. Travis, you know, a lot of our captains have been with us for a long, a long time. Set high standards and ask people, she was in a meeting today, I said, you know, we're done with, you know, we had a couple of providers aren't with us anymore. Not going to lower our standards. You know, you need to have high standards, and you need to adhere to our standards, or you need to hit the road. And that sounds a little harsh, and I don't mean for it to be, but what we do, people, you don't know what we know. So, you're depending on us to make the right choices and the right decisions. You don't know that get with the guidelines American Heart Association says that you should get treatment for a stroke within one hour of having a stroke, and that you get the guidelines, is trying to get it to 45 minutes. You probably don't know that there was a study recently released that said, they've extended the window of giving thrombolytics, you know, for outcomes. So, if you're a clinical person, you have a license, I expect you to make sure you're proficient, because you're putting your trust in your lives in our hands. So, I think, I think Cherryville has a great EMS, we work great with them. You know, Independence has a great EMS, Kaney has a great EMS, Coffeyville, just a, a thought that popped in my mind when I saw four different, that's a great area to start a conversation about, you know, could there be one EMS service? I think there's two dispatch services, could there be one dispatch, you know, service? But I don't know the history of how Labette County got, you know, got there, but certainly would be an area that personally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have the knowledge to participate in it, but I think we've got people that would be knowledgeable on how to share those resources. Anything that we can do to help the city be more successful, lower your costs, group purchasing, work with, you know, David and Sean, you know, both great professionals, I'm happy to do that. So, our doors open for any, any ideas you guys have.
I, I have another question, sorry.
No, you're fine. Craig gave me 10 minutes, it's now a half an hour, he's sitting over there going, man, this is going to be a long night. So, I'm never going to get invited back, thank you.
Okay, okay. See me later. My, my question is, in your own opinion, whether you want to answer it, or whether you can or not, who runs an EMS service better? If it's hospital-run, or if it's run by city, county? I know there's a lot of variables in that, but, but you've been around too, and been in a lot of hospital settings, and you might have an opinion as to, or is that just kind of, kind of an apples-to-oranges question? You really can't, not a definitive answer on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
As to who, who would, where would the strength be? I know the...
You know, I've talked to some folks up in, in Sedgwick County, I've reached back out to Mark Alexander, who heads up the EMS service at Cox. You know, I don't know, you know, my, my instincts are my experiences from being an infantry officer. If I ask you to do 10 things, you might be proficient in seven of them. If I ask you to do three things, you probably can get pretty proficient in three, three things. So logically, I think it's a very difficult ask, probably, to make somebody switch back and forth between fire. I've never done it, that's just, that's just my uninformed opinion. You know, I'd rely on probably Randy, David, and Sean, and, and, you know, and the fire chief over in Parsons, and you've got people more knowledgeable. I, I believe in my heart, probably clinically, the relationships can be formed. The most important thing, I think, is that we have strong clinical relationships, you know, like the, Becky works with David, I think they've met a period of time. I think if we have an opportunity for Labet Health to help provide the medical director for your EMS, we do that for Cherryville. I think that's an opportunity, Craig and I have talked about that, potentially. Anything that we can do to bring people together and not divide them is the best opportunity, I think, to improve the outcome. So, I, I don't, I know I'm not giving you a great answer. I, I don't know.
You know, that's fine, I didn't really want to put you on the spot, I was just asking for...
I'm used to it.
For, for, for your opinion, based on that, because, so...
I'm a hospital CEO, so I lean towards, it's a five-star hospital, I leaned towards, I think if there was ever a way to have a hospital-based EMS service here, and it didn't harm, you know, the community, or harm the fire department, or anybody, and there's no loss of jobs, my, my instincts are, that's a better outcome for the community. But that's just, that's one person's opinion that's biased, because I'm a hospital CEO. Probably if I was a fire chief, I'd probably say, you know, no, it's best to be in the fire department. But, you know, we require a lot of our paramedics and EMTs, you know, in terms of PALS and ATLS, ACLS, we require a lot of advanced training. We require them to give it. I participated in BLS two or three weeks ago, I know, Gary. Don't worry, chest compressions are more important than mouth-to-mouth. It's an important thing I learned. But, you know, I did that because I just wanted to get a feel for, you know, how well they instructed, and how professional, and how the class, you know, was run. We hold trauma conferences. We held one of the largest regional trauma conferences recently. I had people from Kansas City and all over. So, I just think there's resources. I don't think it has to be hospital-based. If we can, the closer we can work together and make sure that David and Sean and, and his team have access to the things our team has, I think it's probably fine to exist the way it currently is. We have joined the KU Collaborative, accountable care organization with the University of Kansas. Becky's going to be inviting David and his team to join Dr. Moser, who's the former Secretary of Kansas Department of Health and Environment, to talk about stroke, STEMI, trauma, what are the evidence-based practices? Less than 1% of the time, should a patient bypass an ER and go to a cath lab? Less than 1% of the time. Most of the time, when you're having chest pain, you're having a heart attack, they're not going to take you straight to the cath lab. What we have to do, what's imperative, is that we stop damage to your heart. And so, unless you're carrying heparin or anti-platelet therapies on your ambulance, then that's not possible. So, if we transport, if my EMS transports a patient to Joplin, when they're having chest pain and bypass the Labet Health ER, I'll have their job, and, because I won't have to, because Randy will have their job, because that's not appropriate, that's not the standard of care. But I think we need to come together and agree, what's the standard of care? And KU, for the state of Kansas, that's our academic medical center, they're our evidence-based center. So, I think, I think we've worked well together for six months, and I, you know, I appreciate that opportunity to work with these guys. We just need to continue and take it to the next level. So, I don't, I don't think it matters. You've got the team, we can do that with. We just need to make sure we're leading the team in the right direction.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
We did have a request from Debbie Miller to address the commission concerning this Mike, are you ready to? It'd be more appropriate now than wait, too.
I thought I got 30 minutes.
Well, drop the zero.
I get cut back.
Yeah, Brian took your time.
I get you too long.
I apologize.
Don't worry, I've been doing my speed reading all day long. Okay, tell me what it might be. My name's Debbie Miller. Although Labet Health's independent facility has been open less than a year, there have already been numerous accounts of individuals' lives being saved by it, thanks to the city's emergency responders and Labet Health's emergency room personnel and equipment. Each time I've heard of these life-saving stories, I've been extremely grateful that at a time we were losing our hospital and emergency room, Labet Health bravely and without hesitation, or much support from the city of Independence, stepped up to the plate and built a new facility for us, which included its life-saving emergency room. However, each time I have thought of Labet Health's tremendous gift to our community, I've also thought of a June 2017 city commission meeting at which Labet Health CEO Brian Williams asked the commission for $200,000 in economic development funds for use for medical equipment and personnel at Labet's Independence facility. At that meeting, then-mayor Fred Meyer expressed his concern that the city's lease agreement made with St. John may be compromised if the commission approved Mr. Williams' request for funds. He then voted against the request. Mr. Meyer was no doubt referring to the lease agreement the city negotiated with Jane Phillips, which became effective shortly after the commission voted to accept the former Mercy Hospital. One term of the lease allowed Jane Phillips to vacate it if the city entered into, quote, "any transaction, agreement, or arrangement with another hospital, medical clinic, or healthcare entity to provide, provide any type of healthcare services in Independence, Kansas, or surrounding areas, other than lesser-owned or third-party contracted patient transport services, including IMSA and Fire Department," end quote. The city is still bound by the terms of this lease. However, this commission should remember all healthcare providers like Labet Health that have stepped up to the plate and provided routine and life-saving healthcare services to local residents. It should then take whatever measures possible to ensure the city provides a level playing field between all such providers in matters ranging from appropriate funding of them to ensuring all EMS transports comply with federal laws. In the past, our city leaders have trust, have betrayed our trust and created an unlevel playing field between healthcare providers serving our community. By ensuring the even-handed treatment of such providers, this commission may not only ensure those providers' continued success in Independence, but also may start restoring the trust Independence residents have in their city government and its leaders. Thank you, and many, many thanks to Labet Health and Brian Williams.
Thank you, Debbie. The next item on the agenda is items for commission action. Item A, consider proclaiming Employee Recognition Day on March 2. Item A, consider proclaiming Employee Recognition Day on March 2, 2018.
Can I make a quick comment about that, about this?
Oh, please.
I just appreciate this coming forward and I was pleased to see when I came here that the social committee had recommended this proclamation last year and as well again this year because it's something that fits in nicely with the type of culture we're trying to build here, and that's one of recognition, recognition of employees. It's clear studies have shown that one of the most key motivating factors of employees is recognition and showing appreciation for, and not just in formal ways like this, but more importantly, even in non-formal, informal ways within the organization at all levels. And so it fits in nicely. I just wanted to bring that point up, that it really builds into the type of culture we're trying to build, which leads to a culture of excellence. Glad you support it and do the proclamation.
Yes, I think sometimes we get focused in on the problems or the concerns of operation and we forget the impact that our employees have on the visitors coming into town. You know, the condition of the streets, the street sweeper, the trash pickup, you know, and visiting water service and particularly sewer service, those say so much about our town and we need to take time to thank those employees. And I think, you know, when we reestablished the awards banquet, that was one way, and then we've had other, the summer picnic. We can't say thank you enough to our staff and it's really a privilege to be able to, as a commissioner and as a mayor, to read the proclamation and to sign it. So I think I'd like to read the proclamation first and then I'll entertain a motion. It says, "Proclamation from the Mayor of the City of Independence, Employee Recognition Day, March 2, 2018. Whereas city employees are dedicated to contributing to the well-being and quality of life for all citizens of Independence, and whereas city employees provide essential services to the citizens of Independence in many areas, including public safety, enforcing the laws, safeguarding the environment, building and maintaining roads, operating plants, repairing, replacing water and sewer lines, discarding refuse, recycling, assisting customers, maintaining parks and cemeteries. And whereas city employees serve as responsible stewards of taxpayer funds and engage in efforts to improve operation and enhance services throughout the city, endeavoring to perform their jobs with professionalism and integrity, making government services more accessible and responsible to the needs of the cities, citizens of Independence. And whereas, Independence is honored to join other cities across the nation on March 2, 2018, to extend our appreciation and gratitude to all City of Independence employees for their continued spirit of dedication. Now, therefore, I Leonard Kaflish, Mayor of the City of Independence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March 2, 2018 as Employee Recognition Day in Independence and call this observance to the attention of all citizens, encouraging them to commend the extraordinary efforts and commitment of our city employees, given under my hand and the great seal of the City of Independence this 22nd day of February, 2018." So I'd entertain a motion.
I move to proclaim March 2, 2018 as Employee Recognition Day and authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And we do want to thank the employees for their, their service and their dedication to the city.
Yeah, they do a great job and I know they face challenges. I had somebody come in my office again yesterday to, it was very upset about the water rates and, you know, that was disruptive enough to my day and these guys have to deal with it constantly, I imagine. So they pay the price when we make a decision like that.
Yeah, we're fortunate to have the dedicated employees that, you know, when we turn the water tap on, something does come out. That's clean and drinkable.
Yeah.
It's always easy to remember the mistakes that, that I make, people make in general. So if you see a city worker out there and they're doing a good job, go up and tell them, thanks. It's not, it's not an easy job, you know, on icy roads, coming up, picking up trash or responding to an emergency or a police call and it's a dispute of some sorts or you're standing out in the middle of the yard arguing or trying to contain a situation. So if they do a good job, compliment them. Too many times we just focus on, you know, what things aren't being done right. But if you see them doing something good or performing their job, go up to them, tell them, appreciate it. You know, a lot of these jobs aren't easy and you're always under the scrutiny of the public, so. And being, being part of utility, I'm well aware of that. Many a year under the watchful eye of the public. So thank you very much for, for your service. It's appreciated.
Five degrees and you got a water leak, the guys are out there in the trench getting wet, fixing it, so we do have great employees. The next item on the agenda, consider authorizing the removal of east-west stop signs on Maple Street at Penn Avenue.
I'm gonna introduce you guys to Officer Tim Townley. I don't know if you ever met him before, but he's a real sharp guy, we're really glad to have him. He's got a lot of talents. One of his talents is he manages our traffic program and he took that over not long after I came here. He's also working to become a crash reconstructionist, which is pretty exciting to me, so we'll be able to, to improve the services that we offer the citizens of Independence whenever there's a traffic crash. So I'm gonna turn it over to him and let him kind of guide this discussion.
As part of my traffic safety duties, one of the things that I was involved in right away was the AAA Safety, Traffic Safety Award, which is an award that you can apply for and we were in that process. And one of the things that they recommended was a traffic safety committee. And so with the chief's assistance and guidance, we created that. And it's a group of entities in the community that are affected by traffic safety. So myself is part of that group. We also have representatives from the insurance agencies. We have a citizen. We have representatives from EMS and Fire, representatives from bicycles group here in town, and also the countywide emergency management department is also represented. And we've also sent out invitations to other groups to attend as they want to.
So how many members do you have?
Right now, we have six that, that show up faithfully.
Okay, thank you.
There are several other that have expressed interest but haven't shown up yet. And one of the things that we look at is cost-efficient, cost-efficient ways to make impact on traffic safety. Chief and I discussed our accident rate. I just completed the, all the statistics for 2017. One of the things that he noticed was that there was a, 16% of our accidents were with parked vehicles. And I, so I did a study on where those parked vehicle accidents occurred and one of the main areas was Penn and Main. And there was a couple of other areas that we'll be looking at later, but right now there was, that was the main one and there was also several others in the downtown area further north on Penn. And so the whole downtown area accounted for most of those parking accidents. That intersection of Penn and Main also accounts for 10% of our total accidents, counting those parked, parked vehicle accidents and also vehicles that were backing out of parking stalls and hitting a vehicle in traffic was not considered a parked vehicle accident because both vehicle, or the one vehicle was moving, the other one was in traffic. So throwing that into the mix, you have a total of, 10% of our accidents occurred at that intersection. What are the, one of the proposals that the traffic safety committee had brought up was to remove stop signs at A Street at Maple Street in order to create an east-west trafficway that we could alleviate some of the traffic from Main Street going through town. If we had another road that was close to Penn, to Main Street that would give drivers the opportunity to get through town without having to stop at the stoplights, we thought that that could alleviate some of the traffic on Main Street at Penn and hopefully reduce the number of crashes in that area. If we do that, if you're turned east on Maple Street from 10th Street, you would travel two blocks and then have a stop sign at A Street. So I think I told you wrong. I think it's removing the, removing the stop signs at Penn, yes, sorry. So you would travel two, two blocks to a stop sign at 8th and then have another two blocks with no stop signs and your next stop sign would be at 6th Street. And then from there, continuing on east, we already have that road set up as the same system. Every two blocks there's a stop sign. So it gives you a mix of, of both ease of travel, but also there are stop signs that would alleviate any speeding issues, which to me would be the, the biggest negative impact of that would be speed. But you also have dips at those intersections which create a natural speed bump, so I don't think that you, that speed would be an issue there, especially considering that there's, there are stop signs at regular intervals that would disrupt, you know, any, any type of speeding activity. This is also a relatively low, or extremely low-cost solution because all it takes is removal of two stop signs. So it would be man-hours, the $50 is the estimated time, or cost that it would take to, to do this project. And I believe that, as I said, you have 10% of your overhaul, overall accidents occur at that one intersection and it's an opportunity to alleviate some of the traffic in that area and hopefully reduce that number.
Officer Townley, I've been a, one of the statistics at that intersection, Penn and Main. My office is right there and you, you try to back out, even though there's nobody in sight, they come around the corner so quickly, then they, they can't stop and they rear into you as you're trying to back out of your parking space. So I know personally that's a very dangerous, I've had many near calls and one collision. But I'm not really clear on how that's gonna help. What you're proposing is gonna help that situation.
The hope is that there will be enough people to choose a, a throughway and not be traveling on Main Street and just, and travel down Maple. If they're, if they're headed from the east side of town to the west side of town, just drop down a block.
So local drivers will...
That's, yes.
Be more likely to use Maple instead of Main?
Yes.
I don't know.
Lewis?
I, I am having a hard time with this, understanding how that actually helps that particular end of the block. You know, you have, if you're looking at the south, the south end of that block where Maple and, and South Penn intersect, you know, you're having, you know, you have your funeral home, you have, you have church, you have a church there, two churches, you have...
Brothers and Science Center.
Yeah, you know, at, at certain times, there's not much parking or there's not an, the parking is not, the parking is vacated at that end, there's, because Brothers isn't open every day of the week. So to me, that's kind of a hit and miss situation. I, I just don't see where that, where that actually is gonna particularly solve anything. That you're either gonna, you're either gonna take a route, either Main or Penn, because you're either in the process of, of trying to get somewhere in that particular area. For me, I'm gonna go down Laurel Street. That's my, that's my option that I go to. I rarely go down Maple Street. There's no need for me to go down to Maple Street. The only time I ever come through that intersection would be funeral or if I'm at Brothers. Most of the time, my alternate route is somewhere other than, than Maple Street.
That's what the hope is, is that more people would, would take Maple, whereas they, they don't take it now. It's not to, it's not to make the people that travel Maple more convenient, it's, it's to move people from Main Street to Maple Street to alleviate the traffic downtown.
I, I just don't see where people are gonna continue to incorporate Maple Street as a more traveled area, being there's already other corridors that are open that, that they can travel on. And with, at times there are congestion, you know, if you have church services, you have a funeral going on, whereas at times it's nice to have those stop signs there. I just, I just think there's other corridors that, that people have options to use and to establish another corridor, corridor to determine whether it would be, be used or not. I don't know, I'm, I don't, I'm having trouble getting around this myself.
I'm skeptical too. I, I go through that intersection every day, sometimes six or eight times a day. And that one block there between Main and Maple on Penn, sometimes the traffic is so bad they're heading south, I, I think you're gonna stack it up if people are trying to get across Maple possibly without having that four-way stop right there. Not that, not that we have traffic jams in Independence exactly, but sometimes it gets pretty busy there when Turbo's closes or, you know, Brothers and, I don't know, I just, I, I'm not really seeing the benefit as much as a potential drawbacks, I guess.
There is quite a bit of pedestrian traffic from the apartment houses and of course, like you mentioned, the churches and during times there are funerals there that I, I'm hesitant to see them removed of the, the number of pedestrian vehicle incidents would increase more than providing a thoroughfare pass downtown. The increased speed in that, in that intersection without having to stop would create a potential conflict.
Jerry, were you about to say something?
Well, the, the thing I keep hearing is about, on occasion, there's a funeral, every Sunday, there's church service. And my retort to that is that, you know, we're, we're comparing constant congestion on Main to occasional congestion, steady congestion to occasional congestion here or congestion here at Maple and, and Penn there. And again, we don't, we can't say definitively what this will do. So there is some experimental aspect to it. What's interesting to me about this is that this isn't a police department, this isn't a city government solution. This is a grassroots solution and part of what I've done coming here is try to push decision-making down to the lowest levels, both in the department and into the, in the community. And so when my police chief's advisory committee speaks to me, I listen and they have made some impactful changes in the way that the police department does business because it reflects, it, it makes the police department relative, relevant and to everyone. And so when I look at this, I also consider, when we discussed this, the, the thing that I liked about it was, okay, this is a reflection of what the community is telling the police department they would like to see. And so those are my only two points on it. And again, yes, it would be an experimental thing. And the neat thing about experimental issues is we can come right back and we can change it back. So, you know, obviously it's the direction that you gentlemen will like, would like to go with it and we understand that, we're not personally vested in this. I'm curious as to what it would do. Personally, I would want to open it up to be a, the whole thing to be a through street if this was the direction we want to go, but that is not the direction that the citizens are indicating they want us to go.
I, I very much appreciate your passion for getting the community involved and respecting their wishes in this. I think that's great. I, I look forward to seeing other recommendations from them because we got, it seems like we've got opportunities all over the city from my perspective. Every day I drive up 11th Street from my house to Brahms, you know, 11th Street, south of Main, they're all unprotected intersections and it seems crazy to me that we don't have any stop signs over there. But this one, I, I don't know, I just, it doesn't seem to me like this is gonna help much on Main and it could make it worse there at that one intersection.
To address the issue of the uncontrolled intersections, that was a task that I assigned to the committee. I said, one of my goals is to reduce and even if possible eliminate uncontrolled intersections in the city. I'm not accustomed to having an uncontrolled intersection inside of a city. That's, that's entirely new to me. And so what they did was they picked a section of town and they said, they, they came back to, to us and said, "Study this and tell us, tell us what's happening here and tell us what you can do about it and then we'll tell you the direction we think you should go." And so we are studying different areas in town for that. And so we are studying different areas in town for that exact concern. And I, I absolutely agree with you. That's, that's probably one of the most important things that we can work on.
But if there's only a low number of cars at an intersection or on a street, it doesn't make sense to just put traffic control. It should be a, an, an obstacle if, if it's in a residential area that you can't see from retaining walls or some obstacle to slow traffic down. Because a lot of our residential areas, there are uncontrolled intersections, but nothing justifies putting a traffic sign there.
Yeah. Sounds like we don't have many accidents at those intersections.
Actually, what, I, I look at my past experience. That's all I can do. And I, this is what I've done for, since probably around 2006, 2007 on, I was, this was my specialty in the community that I served in before. And what I found there was, we had a pretty bad accident, we had a, we had a terrible crash rate for our community. And so we studied it and we found out that ninety percent, I think it was ninety percent of our accidents were, were happening on six miles of roadway. So when I came here and they said, you've got to drive, that, one of my first assignments was you've got to drive, you've got to drive crashes down. And I said, no problem. I'll find the five or 10 miles of roads that we need to deal with. Well, my response to that is that forty-five percent of our accidents are happening on the main roads. Forty-five percent. That means that there's no way to fix crashes in this town. Because the majority of crashes are not happening in a small area. They're happening everywhere. And we just don't have cops for everywhere. So my solution and my experience is, based off of traffic flow in the community I came from, and my traffic management training that I've been through over the years, and traffic safety training I've been through over the years, we, we need an area to focus on and we don't have an area to focus on in Independence. Our crash problems are just not concentrated enough. And it sounds kind of a strange way to say it, but, but I believe that when you control those intersections, then you're going to establish through streets and you're going to establish cross streets. And you're going to develop a consistent pattern. And to support that, as I drive through town, I don't like those uncontrolled intersections and I won't even go through one. I stop at every one of them. So it keeps me from getting anywhere because, you know, the police chief cannot pile up a car. So.
That would be bad.
There's just no way to get a, you know, there's, there's no, nothing good's going to come from that. So I'm, I may be overly cautious, but that's my, off topic, but that's my retort. Thank you, guys.
We do have a request for this item from a citizen, Lisa Richards. We don't have any more questions. I'll let.
She's going to pass.
You withdraw? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
If there's no more questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm not in favor, so I'm not going to make a motion.
I'm not either in favor.
Do we have, I'll make a motion that we deny the request to remove the stop sign at Penn and Maple on the east-west direction. Do I have a second?
So you're making a motion to deny the request? Okay, I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I second.
All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I was waiting for the other sheet to drop. It didn't drop. Sorry.
Next item, item C, consider authorizing purchase of a 2017 95-foot aerial platform fire truck and receipt of proposals for financing.
I have a couple of comments to make about that to start off first. Have some bad news in that this opportunity we had to perhaps get an excellent piece of equipment at a very reasonable price, cost saving a couple hundred thousand probably at least. We've lost out to another city who just got a letter of confirmation into the company and they. Despite verbal talking with us, they just sold it. So we found that out this afternoon. So it's off the table about purchasing the demolition. Secondly, I would like to make some further comments regarding why we did this, the way we did this. As I said earlier, it was an opportunity to get an excellent piece of equipment for a very reasonable price. And so that's the process we were going through. And we had some, like I say, verbal discussions with this company and they were willing to do that. We thought we had, had it until this afternoon. But as you recall, from our planning session last year, replacing this piece of equipment was one of our intention statements.
It was one of, it was our top priority.
Our top six intention statements and priorities. So that's what we've been working through. And of course, at that time, we were hoping to get a grant, which we did not again, get, get the grant. So we, as we talked about during that planning session, we, if we didn't get a grant, we would look at other options of financing to replace the, is it 1995, I think it is? Piece of equipment. Ninety-three. So it's, it's, it's way past its useful life in terms of years. And we are having significant problems with it and if you want more detail on that, but we have significant problems with, that it slows down response. We're looking at major engine repairs. So this was a great opportunity and we would be looking at financing it and going out to banks. Once we got this secured, we would do a, a payment system. That would not take effect until 2019. As we talked about in financing, that that would be the process we'd go through in 2018. And if we had to, we wouldn't be financing anything until 2019 when we would be, we could budget for it. And that was the plan. And that still is the plan. So the discussion now is now that we've lost this piece of equipment, we'd like to move forward with that type of a process. Actually then, we would be putting out an RFP, an RFP, Request for Proposals for the purchase of a, a fire truck and financing it the way that we had talked about, i.e. lease purchased five or 10 years, seven years, something like that, for a, a piece of equipment that has a useful life of seventeen, eighteen years. We would like to move forward with that. Again, you're not voting on that, but kind of the consensus that, that is our understanding and that's the way we'd like to continue. Or, you know, not real, don't really need to decide, I guess, but we'd like to know soon and we can talk about it more. But that's the direction we recommend moving forward now that we've lost this. And unfortunately, going to this process is going to cost us more to get the same type of piece of equipment. But we'll go through the process and see where we go. But anyway, fortunately, we lost out to the, we would have got an excellent piece of equipment.
I would like just some more information. I, I've got in on the tail end of this. I know that, that they've applied for grant money, five hundred thousand dollars for the last four years.
Oh, we applied more than that.
Or, or, or probably more than that, but at least that, that I'm aware of. But I guess I would like to know what, of course, the dollar amount, you know, how are we going to pay for this? If, if being, we've been looking at replacement of this vehicle for a good number of years, we've not been able to put any money aside toward a possible purchase of this piece of equipment.
We don't, we don't have a repeat, a vehicle, what they call a vehicle replacement fund, which is, which is a good financing tool that you do, just as you said, for all your vehicles, you, you, you depreciate the value and then you put money aside for every vehicle over time. So when the time comes to replace that, you have, the funds there. It's called a vehicle replacement fund. No, we don't have that and haven't done that. But we are where we are and we're moving, so we want to move forward with that. The financing again is, is, as we talked about, would be through a lease purchase type of situation where we do something over five years. And, and you put that out to bid to the banks and local banks and whomever who can bid on that type of a, a short-term loan for that. And that's how we would finance it. And I think we'd get good rates for that currently. But of course, that's, that's the process. And, and it's, with the, the other advantage with this would have been, we would have had this fairly immediately. Going through the RFP process and getting a truck, it's be, it would be then built. So it would take probably a year before we would actually, well, maybe 10, 12 months, 11 months, something like that, once we signed a contract for, to, to purchase. So.
But just to let you know a little bit more on that, Louis, I mean, and, and nothing is in that budget right now because 2019 doesn't exist. We're getting ready to go into that process. But last year is, as we came on and we, we started putting everything together and we identified that this was going to be a necessity. We were going to go, the grant process had already been started. We're in that. We were waiting at what their, what the federal grant decision was going to be in August or September. But in our CIP, in the event that that did not happen, we identified a payment stream for this going out through the remainder of the five years. So we have begun the process of identifying that in our plan. If, if that helps matters.
Okay.
It helps your answer.
Yeah, that, that does. I was just trying to determine how this is, where the money is actually coming from to make those lease payments over a five-year, five-year, seven-year, whatever this is based on. You know, we're still, you know, we're still waiting for an audit of, of, from, you know, from a previous year. So it's kind of hard to plan. As you're trying to move forward with some of these issues, when you're not even, not even sure where you're at to base this on. But, but I would like to have a detailed information about what is actually some of the problems with the actual unit itself. I know typically they have probably about a 20-year life expectancy on the equipment. This equipment, if I remember right, it probably has, gentlemen, probably 80,000 miles on it, somewhere in that, pretty close, maybe a little more, a little more than that. I don't know whether that's excessive or not. I.
Often this type of equipment, it's not miles, but it's hours on an engine that's running constantly. Even when it's not mobile, it's running. So you look at hours on an engine more than, than miles. But, so it was a 93, so do the math. But Sean can certainly talk about some of the issues that we had. And that's why we identified it last year, because you weren't part of that process. That's why it was identified that we need to replace this piece of equipment because it's just not reliable and.
Well, like you said, a 20-year lifespan, this is 25 years. So I mean, it's tired. It's put in its service. And it's one of the most important pieces of equipment we have. That's what protects our downtown if we have a fire, large house fires. We use it on house, we've used it on the last three or, or, the ladder we've used on the last three or four house fire. So we've got to have an air ladder, plus for the ISO rating, that also comes into play. So it's, it's very important that we do something about this aerial.
A question that I have brought up, I'm sorry, that people have brought up to me is that the, the truck is used for everything. In other words, if you're, if you're doing environmental inspection, tall grass or some complaint or something, we're using a million-dollar truck to basically do every non-emergency run that we do, whether it's tall grass, trash in the yard or something. Even where I worked at, the, the equipment was several hundred thousand dollars. But we didn't take line trucks. You know, you know, if we were working in that area and we were buying somewhere to eat, that's where we ate. But generally, if, if we, we would either take a pickup or another vehicle and do some of these other items that we would do that would be part of daily routine, but, but it didn't involve driving a three or four, five hundred thousand dollar truck every time you turned around. So my question is, is, is that not maybe harder on the equipment? Because we're just using it for short incremental runs, taking it to here or there rather than an actual, on an emergency run? So yeah, we're building hours. It, it, you know, it wouldn't be any, it'd be equivalent to me having an equipment and they're looking at hours and, and how much time the, the vehicle sits and idles. You know, we have programs where I worked at that monitored that. And there was a certain percentage that we had to, we had to keep under, underneath that certain figure. So I guess that's what I'm getting at. Maybe, maybe how it's being used. And it, it just seems like every time you put a million-dollar vehicle out on the road, you know, you run the risk of something happened to it. And I understand you need it when you're making critical runs, emergency runs. But, but are there any other alternatives when that's not necessarily the case to where another vehicle would be available, to where personnel could use?
Since I took over a year ago, that ladder truck does not leave the bay unless it's a structure fire. We respond with engines. So it's not used on environmentals. It's not driven around town. It stays in the bay because I'm trying to preserve it.
Okay. On your other vehicles though, you have, is that a possibility that you could use other vehicles that would be available rather than what you're using now?
As far as environmentals? We've got to be able to respond to emergencies. So the people out doing environmentals have got to be with their piece of equipment to respond to an emergency.
Okay.
So that's the reason you might see an engine out doing an environmental. They've got to be ready to drop what they're doing and respond to the emergency.
Well, maybe the environmental needs to be done by a different department so that the fire department can be available and be training for the fire instead of writing up tall grass too. That's an option, to use a smaller vehicle too. That's of course, management decision there. I thought, when we were looking at the budget in 2016 for 2017, we raised five mils for streets and equipment purchases. And it seems like that money's been absorbed. We've talked for, I know, since 2013, the need of a truck. And now we're here five years with no money still to purchase a truck and we.
Yeah, it, it is still reserved back. It is, it has not been pulled into the general fund. We have not needed to do that as we anticipated we might need to. So it's still sitting back.
So then when we look at these purchases for a new vehicle, we will have some funds.
If, if, if that's how you all choose to do that. I mean, we, we're going to have a variety and I, I think as we go through this strategic process that we're going to commence upon, that's going to start that 2019 budget season for us. And we start evaluating the needs of projects throughout the, the community, whether it's equipment or, or roads or whatever the case may be. We have a, we have a pool of money there that we can, you all can help determine where that goes.
Then if we've got that, is it a possibility now to go to a new truck in increments? That we can find a, a used vehicle in good condition, that we can make a significant, if not pay for it outright? And then get by five, 10 years with it and accumulate more money that's so we can get closer to having money. And I know the cost of a, a new truck is going to go up, but if we can cut down the amount of money we're financing, then that's going to save us on interest. But, you know, I think in, at this point with all the needs we've, we've got and shortage of, of money, maybe we need to look at other options than just a new vehicle, but maybe explore some other possibilities with used. I've heard of some ladder trucks from Wichita that the city sold were very, very reasonable. So, you know, as we're looking at, and now we're at square, square one, why don't we look at all possibilities instead of just a new vehicle, but look at a, a used or some intermediate step?
Can I comment on that? Is that all right?
Yes.
You're talking about Wichita. Okay. In the bigger cities, as he was talking about vehicles on the, they are on the road constant. They are every day, but in hours and hours. and hours on them every day. So my concern would be buying somebody else's problem. I mean, we need something certified, we know it's gonna be reliable, that we can trust. I mean, people's lives depend on this truck. That, that's my concern.
Yeah, the, well, we'd wanna make sure that it was certified, but, you know, there's, there's still, uh, our problem is balancing a budget without increasing taxes. We've in, we've made a significant increase to water rates that a lot of people are suffering because of neglect in, in that department. And we just have to start sharpening our pencil and looking at some other alternatives. That's all I'm saying, you know, to just come in with one, one proposal. Uh, and since this is, uh, off the table now, maybe as we come back, look at some other options, too, in the meantime, so.
I think so. This, this was a very unique situation. I, they, they came to us, this was a demo model. It, it's not really used. Nobody's owned it. The, the manufacturer taking it, showing it around at shows for other municipalities. And they came to us back in, what, in December, and I told them we had to wait, because we had to get into a situation that we're into eighteen, where I knew that we wouldn't have any financial obligations if we got into a lease purchase, till we could get it budgeted to nineteen. So they came to us and said, hey, if you're gonna do something, you better pull the trigger now, or it's gonna be gone. So we, we got hurried into this. Everything's changed now. So we, we will have a little better time to put stuff together for you to evaluate this.
Thanks.
Sean, based on what you said earlier, I'm guessing our existing unit has virtually no value. We won't be able to get much for it.
I would say very little.
Okay.
I can't give you a dollar amount, but can't be worth a whole lot.
I assume there must be businesses out there somewhere that take those and overhaul them and make them reliable again, and certified, and...
Yeah, I'm sure there is. Just takes money.
Sure. All right. Yeah, I just wondered if ours was worth anything to anybody. Thanks.
I, I did happen to do some internet looking here in the last couple of days, and there is a, I'm trying to think the groove it is, but I did find a unit that was, I think, the same year as ours, and it was on a website. Um, command apparatus, equipment, I'm not sure. I, I may be wrong on that. But they had a, um, used, um, fire truck for sixty-five thousand dollars. I believe it was the same, uh, model, year. Um, it might have had, might have had forty-five thousand miles on it. I'm not sure. Not sure where it came from. But it was certified. And then they had other, other, uh, from various price ranges, depending on what you wanted to spend, that were available. Some were, uh, a couple of them were ninety-three foot or bigger. I would imagine in ninety-three, the seventy-five-foot ladder truck was probably, uh, standard at that time, and that's changed everything. At least what I've been able to look at, looks like it's gotten bigger, ninety-three or bigger, uh, with a platform, which makes it more safe. And, and we're all about providing safe equipment for police, fire. I mean, that's, that's number one priority. But we also have a bal, balancing act here that we have to maintain, too. So my other question I wanted to ask you, um, is that, do you have a maintenance contract with any of, any of the fire equipment that you have through, like maybe emergency apparatus?
We sure do.
Do they? So you're on a regular maintenance schedule that you use for all your, your vehicle equipment?
All the fire apparatus.
All the fire apparatus, okay. And do you roughly have an idea what you spend on average, let's say, the last five years? Any idea? Twenty...
Total?
Uh, on average per year, twenty, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year, per year, less, more?
Well, if we could look at that, you know, I, just on this particular unit, last year, twenty thousand dollars?
Last two years.
Yeah, so, you know, we've racked up forty thousand dollars just in maintaining, keeping this thing in operation now, just on one unit.
Sure, sure, understand.
Not including the other units, but, but if, if you want some additional information on that, we can do the research.
Yeah, I, I think so. And then a list of repairs that the unit itself needs, and what the dollar amount would be on that. Um, yeah, just, just, just as a comparison, something I can look at, 'cause I, I got down in the tail end of this, so I don't know any, any of this thing that these people have all talked about prior to this. So I'm just trying to learn as much information as I, as I can. But, you know, a billion dollars is a lot of money.
It is.
And, you know, they have to balance along all the other needs of the community. But I'm glad to see that we're still sitting on that five million. To me, if we're already collecting money, and it's at there, rather than continually going out and borrowing more money, and start putting some of that money to, to use that we've already all collected, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item D, consider a text amendment to the zoning code, specifically Article Eight Sign Regulations, Section eight oh three point six. Kelly?
This is a really sliding item.
I know.
Terribly.
Actually, all we are needing to do is add just the, a little C to the ordinance that we did before, just so it's more specific that it relates, um, back to the electronic signs portion of the, the commercial sign regulation, so it's not misconstrued to apply to the other areas of that section. So it's basically just a clarification, and Jeff has dictated the ordinance, so we are requesting that you authorize the ordinance prepared by the city attorney to make this modification. We held another public hearing, went through planning and zoning, and went back through the process again, just to put this little C in this ordinance.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Sure. I move to adopt an ordinance prepared by the city attorney, modifying ordinance number four-two-five-two, to include changing Section eight oh three point six point B point three, to quote, "comply with and follow all requirements and standards designated for the use as set forth in section eight oh two point five point C."
Okay, we have the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Oh, next item, item seven, reports. Item A, report on asset forfeiture data by the Independence Police Department.
Where are we gonna do the extra item at?
Uh, I have it after reports.
After reports.
As an extra item at the bottom of the agenda.
Excuse me. Is that what, Sean, is he here for the extra item? Turner?
Yeah, I mean, it would be that, just to answer any, to answer any questions you might would have on it.
Okay. We'll go ahead with, with Jerry then, if you want to present, please.
Sure. Uh, this is a report that's supposed to be done annually, that I was made aware of recently. Anytime that an agency has any asset forfeiture funds in the bank, or dispenses them, or seizes any assets, we have to do this report to our governing bodies. And so in twenty, I included twenty-sixteen in tonight's report to get us up to date. Asset seizures in twenty-sixteen, we, we seized forty-five-hundred-and-seven dollars in cash, five firearms, and three hundred dollars in ammunition, estimated value. Um, those were all from drug seizures, drug cases. Twenty-sixteen, we, uh, let's see, we deposited forty-five-hundred-and-seven dollars in the law enforcement trust fund. The four firearms are still in evidence. One firearm is placed in inventory for official use. Uh, the ammunition is still in evidence. And in twenty-sixteen expenditures, we spent four thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars to purchase cell phone forensic examination software, equipment, or licensing. Some important things to note about asset forfeitures, any firearms that are seized under asset forfeiture is in accordance with state law. They have to be destroyed, sent to KBI, put into service in our agency, or dispersed to another law enforcement agency. So the, the state does not allow us to sell those. To anything else, we can sell and get back. The other thing is, is that fund is, the, the spending on that fund is limited. Uh, it can't be spent for budgeted items. So anything that's gonna be a part of a regular budget. And so the, the desire is that the, uh, the citizens of the state of Kansas do not want us running our police department off of asset forfeitures, and I absolutely support that. Twenty-seventeen, we had six thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars in cash seizures, nine firearms, three firearms accessories, and two hundred dollars in ammunition estimated value. We dispo, the disposition on that is sixty-one hundred and eighty-three dollars went into the trust fund. The nine firearms and accessories were turn, returned to the legal owner. I want to explain on this one that they were not in possession of the legal owner when they were seized. So in other words, uh, a family member will say had possession of those firearms, was arrested, they were seized in the process. Uh, obviously, it's illegal to possess firearms when you're committing a crime, or if you've been convicted of certain crimes. And so as the investigation unfolded, a family member came forward and, and said that those are mine, and we agreed to that settlement and returned those, because we felt like it was the appropriate thing to do. Uh, asset dispositions in twenty-seventeen, that's what we just returned, just covered that. Asset expenditures, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars were used to purchase, uh, cell phone forensic examination software, equipment, or licensing. That's a recurring, uh, expense that's outside of the budget. And then we spent two hundred, almost two hundred and fifty dollars there, as you see, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents in training. So any questions on any of that?
So you can use the seized funds for officer training?
Yes, to a degree. We can't build our training budget off of it. But if it's a unique training event, so for instance, uh, we're going, the hope is to, there's a very well-reputed, reputed national, uh, training school that takes officers in and, and teaches them about, uh, drug investigations, um, vehicle interdiction, that kind of thing. And so the goal is that we can use it for that. Uh, we're working on the K-9 program, reviving that. So that'll be a one-time training expense for that particular, uh, K-9 team. And so we're looking to spend it for that. So, uh, I, as I read the state law, it's just, you know, you just can't run your police department off of asset forfeiture.
But you can pick up the special, specialized training that is beyond, uh, typical training or anything like...
I think that the message from the, from the legislature is that, uh, you know, these criminals are who's costing the city, and so these criminals need to pay the city for their, for the services that they incur. And I, I support that, so.
Well, thank you for your report. Any questions for Jerry?
No.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Jerry. Next item on the agenda is a two thousand seventeen annual report. Um, do we have any questions direct to the report? It was in our packet. And the report, if I understand from the notes, it will be posted on the website for the public. And are there, um, any available for, for the public, or just...
It's actually in the agenda packet for this meeting. So anybody that wants to go to the agenda packet for this meeting, they can upload the report. And then we're gonna post it as a separate post, as, as like a news flash. And then we'll put a link to it on the Facebook page, and then I'll create a, a slideshow, it's a little slower than this one, for, uh, channel, channel sixty-five, so you can look at it, maybe actually read some of it, so.
Also, some of the summary data will be in the, uh, citizen newsletter.
Great.
Coming out.
Great. Well, thank you. There's no questions concerning the annual report. Um, next item is the city board minutes. Any questions concerning the board minutes? Um, let's go to the extra item. Item A, consider approving an agreement between the City of Independence and the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation, also known as KDOT, for an economic development grant of three hundred thousand dollars for Peter Pan Road Extension. Uh, this was the grant we had approved applying for, and now it's time to, uh, sign the, the agreement with KDOT. Uh, the only question, maybe Sean, if you want to update us on the schedule, we did have a news release published in tonight's paper about it, but have we got the drawings in for review by KDOT?
No, we're waiting on the terms of the agreement. There's some things in there that have to be in our engineering contract. So before we submit those, we need to amend our, our agreement. Um, and the timeframe that I spoke with, uh, the city about here today and yesterday was that this next piece, we expect to bid, uh, mid to late summer, with construction beginning thereafter, and the, uh, construction completion by January.
Okay. What about right-of-way acquisition? Do we have any issues with this section?
We will need to obtain some temporary right-of-way, and, um, we, we, um, will be assisting the city in doing that. Um, there, there may be some, like on the other pieces, some cost to cure with some fencing and some other issues, but won't be a huge, uh, impact to the project budget. We did meet, uh, the city, um, met with the county, and the, um, hospital, I believe, is in December, actually, and discussed this scope of work, and that everyone was still in agreement to commit their original hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the project, this project budget is three hundred thousand dollar KDOT grant, plus a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of combined funds, for a total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
So what, I, we will need to amend our engineering agreement early at the next meeting for these terms. And then, if you recall, that was a shorter piece that we originally, um, were signed up to design and inspect. So we'll, we'll get that into the city for review sometime next week.
Okay. Utilities are not an issue in this section?
They are not. I believe there was one city utility, uh, issue, and they've already relocated that. So, uh, the rest of the utilities will not, will not be an issue, so.
Good. Any questions for Sean?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then...
Thanks, Sean.
I would, uh, entertain a motion.
You wanna go, Louis? You want me to?
Uh, I've got it right here. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the Secretary of Transportation, Kansas Department of Transportation, and the City of Independence for an economic development grant of three hundred thousand dollars for the Peter Pan Road Extension.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, commission comments.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple. Um, I know it's late, but I got an, um, an emergency, emergency request that we sign some documentation for the Tree City application. Are you, are you familiar with that?
Yeah.
Okay, is that already, have you taken care of it? I, I assume they contacted me 'cause they thought I was still mayor.
No, I haven't. Well, I'm aware when we originally did it.
Right, okay.
But not, nothing new.
Does...
There's, there's nothing urgent to get that time.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay.
Never mind then. They, they made it sound extremely urgent that we sign it today.
It's, it's not.
Um, okay, number two, sorry, I have three items. Um, I received a letter from a citizen saying that they were not getting our meeting notifications that I passed on to you. I just wondered if, um...
We've taken care of that.
Okay, so that, whatever...
That was resolved.
There was a problem, but it's fixed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there was.
All right, thank you. Um, also, I wanted to just discuss very briefly possibly our newspaper column. I'm not clear on how we're gonna move forward with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I had, uh, I had that as one also. Um, somewhere there's...
We're just gonna take turns, or...
Did you, um, get the email with the wording?
The wording for the...
For the kickoff article?
Yes.
Does that look okay for you guys?
This part? Yeah, it's fine with me.
Then, I thought what we could do is, uh, rotate. I think the way it's set up, the, um, email... Then, I thought what we could do is rotate, I think the way it's set up, the email address will have an access code that each of us can access, so we'll take turns and answer the questions, or.
Okay, great.
So it could really be.
If we get multiple questions, we can choose the one we like, right?
No, you, no, you got to take the hardest question first.
No, you do, you're the mayor.
No, so that's what if, the wording looks good, and I think Amanda wanted a quotable quote from us to go in it, so. We could respond to her, she'll go ahead and publish the article, I think Josh has already set up the email address to entertain questions, and as we, we get in, if Amanda will let us know when it's open, if, if you want to take the first week, and Louis, and I'll take the last, and then we'll rotate.
Going by age then, is that what you mean? Just kidding.
I want to see how you perceive first, and then we'll give you certain direction on, on how I'm supposed to proceed.
Well, you know, I love to talk, so I'm good with that.
Great.
So, does that look okay?
Yeah, looks great to me.
We'll proceed with that, we'll get our response back to you, then you can set a date and let us know when it's going to be, be in the paper.
I really think every opportunity we have to share information with the public is a great thing.
Yeah, I think so, I think it really encourages the interaction, and it's, it's come a long way. So I thought, you know, your articles was a good start, and this is kind of taking that to the.
Yeah, so much better.
Next.
Yeah, absolutely.
Step, and, and also then looking at our citizen forum, kind of check our schedules.
Yeah, I love that idea too.
See what that would work, maybe we can discuss it at the next commission meeting, and look at dates, and get it set up, and fine, finalize the format, but any other?
No, I'm finished, thank you, sir.
Okay.
The only other question that I'd like to propose, or ask Craig, I know we're in the process of setting up some top of timelines with trainer as far as the start sealing the nineteen sixteen city hall.
Right.
So that's in the process of being, being developed, and there'll be a timeframe or something set up, so we'll have some guidelines that we'll be able to look at and, and see and, and meet down the road, so.
Right, yeah, we're moving forward with that, a little behind on that, but we did actually talk with Andy Pitts today, this afternoon, talked about the scope of work and what, you know, sealing the envelope means and, and would include, and they hope to have something back to us by next week that we can then bring to you and show what they're proposing for their agreement to do that design work, and then, of course, that would lead to them developing an RFP that would put out for the actual work. And so hopefully by next week, we'll have kind of an estimated cost on that, that worked.
Great. Is there still, I know we had at one point somewhere around a million dollars in a building fund that was collected from that special use sales tax, is that money still available that we could draw on?
I'll let Mike give you, we do have, you know, there is a special use sales tax, point two five percent of that.
It may be nine hundred thousand or less.
I'm wanting to say it's eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, but it's, it's right in there.
Okay, is that something we could draw from to, to finance some of the initial improvements to the nineteen sixteen?
That's what it's for, it's for structures, building, city facilities.
Okay. My only other concerns I have, oh, have we got anything back from Westar? Did they did the comparison on both facilities?
So yes and no. Carrie got ahold of me on Monday, and due to all the inclement weather, we were supposed to meet on Tuesday.
Okay.
She has to postpone that meeting, so I'll be meeting with them next week.
Okay.
To get that data.
But they, they already have the data collected and, and ready to share it with everyone else?
Yep.
Okay, my only other things I have, I'll visit with you, I'll send you an email that, that people have passed on. I think I've got some people that would like to sit down and talk with you, if you'd be willing so, but I'll, I'll discuss with you when we have our one-on-one, and, and then maybe reach out to them, and they can set up something with you.
Great, sure.
Okay.
Anytime.
Well, I had the nineteen sixteen city hall phase one, I went back through the proposals that we had looked at, and this was some of the items that we had talked about for, that was in the budget. Was roof replacement, window replacement, tuck pointing, basement waterproofing or repair. And look, I did the drawings for the elevator, and we did some waterproofing around the perimeter where it was accessible, so, and we used a rubberized material, I believe, so it might not be necessary to do the whole thing, but check its condition. And then interior demolition and electric service entrance, those might be some things to consider in phase one. One of the advantages of looking at doing the demolition separate from the new construction is you have a clean slate to work from, there's no unknowns going into the new work. You've identified all the, the places of potential asbestos or any problems, so the actual construction costs, reconstruction can be more accurate with less contingent fees, but this is kind of what we had, had noted in some of the proposals of looking at, so I don't know if that's what you've discussed.
We actually talked about, about everything there, we were, we did talk about the base, and had there been any insulation, the foundation and so forth, and weatherproofing, and we didn't think there had been, but there perhaps have, but what, what they're looking at, the scope of work is whether they need to investigate that, dig, dig, cut it down, and see what's there.
Yeah, I've got the drawings, we, we put a perimeter drain around the building with gravel backfill and protection board on the outside.
When the elevator?
This is on the basement.
Yeah, but when they, when, when did, when did you do that, what?
At the same time.
When the element, right.
I think it was nineteen ninety.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Yeah, the drawings were by hand then.
That's right, strap board, get the strap board out. So yeah, and I'll, I'll pass this along to Andy as well.
The other item I had was the Ask Your Commish, so we've covered both of those. So the next item on our agenda is the executive session. Yes, so we'd need a motion. Let's see, I can make them, or, do you want to make the motion?
I make a motion. I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city's attorney regarding a contract dispute pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two. The open meeting will resume at?
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Yeah, fifteen.
Eight-ten, how about eight-ten?
Yeah, we, eight-ten's fine.
Will resume at eight-ten o'clock PM in the veteran room of Memorial Hall. Those invited to attend are the city commissioners, city manager, assistant city manager, city clerk, and city attorney.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Call the meeting back to, to order, there's no action to be taken from executive session. So the next item on the agenda is adjournment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yeah, aye.
Okay, you made the motion.
I don't know. I seconded.
I made the motion.
He made the motion.
Okay.
Gary's second.
Yeah, okay.